Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 2018. The time is nine o'clock. This is a special meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. Would you join me by standing for the invocation? Remain standing for the pledges to the flag. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you, dear God, for the blessings of this day, the freshness of the morning after the rains yesterday. Father, we are so grateful that we had a reprieve from the heat that we've been experiencing. And Father, we know it's all part of your plan. We leave it under your control. Dear God, as we discuss the business of the county this day, we ask that you be with us. You give us wisdom in the judgments and the decisions that are made. Give us peace in the decisions that are made. And Father, we're grateful for all that have a willingness to serve. Father, be with all of our military, our first responders, those that day by day put their health and their safety and their wellness to protect each and every one of us from the day-to-day activities that cause danger in our lives. We're so appreciative, we're so grateful for their dedication to their professions and their dedication to their fellow man. Father, thank you for loving us so much, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? Are there any public comments this morning? Anybody care to make any public comment?
I have one. Don't forget to mention to our treasurer today, it's her birthday.
Do we want to sing "Happy Birthday" in your absence? I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to ask questions.
Are y'all hiding her this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will go to consent agenda item number three, number four, and number five. Number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for June 2018 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. Agenda item number five, receive an approved Grimes County Second Quarter Investment Report for the period ending January 30, 2018.
June 30.
June 30. What'd I say?
January.
I'm ready for the cool weather here. June 30, 2018. My apologies. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments or concerns? I know we've had time to look at these, but we've also had, been very busy with other things, so give you just a moment. And I see that we have Mr. Coffey's signature on the investment report, so he's fully engaged in that process from his appointment.
If we don't have any questions, then I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
A second motion. There's a motion before the court to approve consent agenda items number three, four, and five by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We'll proceed to number six on the agenda. Commissioner Dobianski, consider and take action to approve the proclamation honoring Grimes County citizen Betty Neblet and authorize the county judge as signatory. See attachment number six.
If I may, I've been working on developing an animal shelter in the county for the last several years, and we have contacted each of the individuals in the county who have been doing this for years on their own. We have several in the county, and Ms. Neblet is one of the ones that has done it for about 30 years. And so, we're going to recognize her today for her years of service in taking care of the animals, picking them up off of the streets, and taking care of animals of people who have been incarcerated or families been sick or lost their jobs or whatever. And at this time, I'll just allow you to read the proclamation if you would.
I will. Okay. You pass the honor to me. All right.
You're holding it, right?
Well, he has a copy. All right. "Grimes County Proclamation. Whereas the county of Grimes, its elected..."
Can we record this?
Ma'am?
Can we record you saying this?
Sure, absolutely. Would you like to come up here by the podium or bring your recorder up a little closer or whatever works for you?
Can we, if possible, for when it's on, to deliver this to her?
That's a real possibility. Where is she located at?
Off at 244 Out Key.
I can do that.
Okay. I'll be glad to take you there. Go ahead.
Are you ready? All right. "Grimes County Proclamation. Whereas the county of Grimes, its elected officials and grateful citizens takes pleasure in recognizing Betty Neblet for her selfless dedication and care of neglected, abused, and abandoned animals for the last three decades at her home in Keith, Texas. And whereas Betty Neblet is well-known for her love and desire to help animals in need of food, shelter, and veterinarian care. And whereas Betty Neblet has provided a safe refuge for rescued strays, oftentimes aggressive and feral, misplaced, sick, and/or injured animals, as well as provided hospice care in her home for those animals who had no one to care for them in their final days. And whereas Betty Neblet worked tirelessly to build secure shelter and cared for over 5,000 animals in the last 30 years, operating on a few donations and her own personal finances. And whereas Betty Neblet employed over 20 people over the years, many of which have become her adopted family. And whereas Betty Neblet has worked with doctors across borders while they were out of the country. And whereas her home has boarded animals at no cost for servicemen, jail inmates, and the indigent until they could take care of their pets again. Whereas Betty Neblet has been available in according to animals brought to her home by Grimes County constables. And whereas she has personally provided to county residents the cost of spade, neuter, medications, and other veterinarian care when they could afford, when they could not afford to financially do so. And whereas Betty Neblet has personally provided transportation options and costs to receive animals in need or place them in foster homes. And whereas she has often placed the needs of the animals in her care above her own health and well-being, sacrificing time and family on holidays, vacations, and other events to do so. And whereas Betty Neblet loved all God's creatures, both large and small, domesticated and feral, and took care of them without discrimination. And whereas she has provided a haven for those animals through personal sacrifice and through no personal or financial gain for doing it. Be it proclaimed that the county of Grimes hereby recognizes and commends Betty Neblet for her dedicated commitment to animals of Grimes County and her tireless efforts to provide for them. Be it further proclaimed that I, Joe Fouts III, County Judge of Grimes County, do by here, do hereby proclaim this day, August the 1st, 2018, as Betty Neblet Day in Grimes County, Texas, to increase public understanding of the importance of animal rescue and the importance of being a voice for the voiceless. County of Grimes on this first day, August 2018." You're most welcome. Is there a motion to accept this proclamation?
I move that we approve your proclamation honoring Grimes County citizen, Ms. Betty Neblet, and authorize the county judge as signatory.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six by Commissioner Dobie, first by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Before we move on, I'd like to state that as we put together the animal shelter for the county, we're not trying to put the individuals who are doing rescue in the county out of business. We want to work with them, and we will continue to do so as when we get the shelter in place. There's been some comments that we're, you know, we're going to be overwhelmed when we do that. But we want the people who are doing it to continue to do it, and we will work with them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Where the motion is behind. We'll have this recorded with the county clerk, and then we will present you with the proclamation, okay? And we'll have Commissioner Mallett then deliver it to your sister. Thank you so much. Moving to agenda item number seven, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator David Lilly. Item number seven, consider and approve the grant application resolution between Grimes County and the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Division regarding Homeland Security Grant Funding for the Fiscal Year 2017 for Upgrade Interoperable Communications Project and authorize the county judge as signatory. See attachment number seven. And we were given a slight revised resolution on that item number seven.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lilly.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners. Reason for this resolution, reason we have to have this approved is in getting with Jesse, looking at our grants, we have two Homeland Security Grants currently, one for 2016, which is the interoperable communications project for the Anderson Tower. And the other one is for 2017, which is the Bediyes Tower Project. And we found that they had added a little money to our 2016 grant. There was a little bit left over within the region, and they swept it to ours just, and it wasn't much, it was about 1,300. But it was, you know, there's always sometimes cost overruns, things like that. So it was, you know, to our benefit to go ahead and have them do that. And when we were ready to approve the change, the approving official, which is the county judge, they still had Ben Lamont's name. And in some counties, they only have county judge. Ours specifies the judge's name. And so, we had to get a change. That's what the resolution does, is actually officially change that with the governor's office so that we can actually make those changes in the grant, and also close the grant out when it comes to the end of this month. We had approached them about the possibility of changing it to where it doesn't have a name, so we don't have to keep running into this every time there's a changeover of judges. And the governor's office advised that they would prefer that the name be on there. So I'm not sure why other counties don't have that. I don't get into that. But, you know, at least for us, they recommended that we go ahead and do these resolutions so that we can, you know, follow the proper procedure to upgrade that and to allow you to be the authorized official on any changes.
Based on what Mr. Lilly had shared, is there a motion on agenda item number seven?
I think the motion to approve the grant application resolution between Grimes County and the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Division regarding Homeland Security Grant Funding for Fiscal Year 2017 for Upgrade Interoperable Communications Project and authorize the county judge as signatory.
Is there a second? There is a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go to agenda item number eight. Consider and approve the grant application resolution between Grimes County and the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Division regarding Homeland Security Grant Funding for Fiscal Year 2017 for Bediyes Tower Project and authorize the county judge as signatory. See attachment number eight. And again, we were also given a slightly revised resolution for item number eight.
Yes. And again, just as we discussed in the previous item, same reason for this one. The reason there is a separate resolution for each is because they're separate and distinct grants, and they need a separate resolution to appoint you as the approving official for each.
Is there a motion for agenda item number eight?
I move to approve the grant application resolution for the Bediyes Tower Project and authorize the county judge as signatory.
Second motion. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett on agenda item number eight, a second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Lilly, are these officials for needing my signatures? Do you have another copy? All right. There you are, sir. Agenda item number nine, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant David Cook. Item number nine, agenda item number nine says, approve annual full-service maintenance agreement for the county's two portable emergency generators to be completed by Cummins Southern Plains, Houston. See attachment number nine. Lieutenant Cook?
As with the 600 kilowatt generator that we have at the sheriff's office, we'd like the maintenance agreement, annual maintenance agreement approved by the court so that we can have the maintenance, periodic maintenance done on the two portable generators that we currently have custody of at the sheriff's office. The actual cost is approximately $900, or thereabouts, for the two generators to be performed by Cummins Southern Plains to do the maintenance on the other standby generators that we have in place at the sheriff's office. Don't have a budget line item as such to pay for this. And we're also going to have to purchase a couple of utility cables to give us the ability to at least use these in the event of an emergency, whatever that emergency may be. It's not something that we can come to any conclusion on as far as what those needs may be. But we have the two generators. They should be, they should be maintained and capable being put into use for wherever that need may be.
Do you know what the price of the utility cables might be?
Not as yet. I haven't contacted TriStar yet. I think it's TriStar who was, I mean, that was recommended by Cummins Southern Plains. And as much as they can probably come up with something, I guess, you know, if you go with a 30-foot or if you go with a 50-foot cable, I really don't know. I guess if you cannot foresee what your need may be, you're just going to have to go with something and just hope it's going to work.
What is the length of term on that?
It's an annual maintenance agreement. It's not a contract. It's such, or they don't call it a contract. They actually call it a maintenance agreement whereby for that price, they will do the full service on each unit and give us preferential service in the event that we have an urgent need or an emergency with one of them being dead or something else.
Are these the two generators that Mr. Lilly was over at one time? Are these the same two?
Yes.
The total one, just?
Yeah. They're the same thing that were at the Navasota Annex, and that we had been keeping stored at the sheriff's office.
Ms. Nichols, didn't we have a budget for that?
Yeah, it's actually being budgeted under the jail side.
Okay.
On full.
Currently or for next budget?
For next year.
Okay. Can, can these maintenance issues wait until the noon? Or do they need to be done immediately?
It was my choice. I'd rather, I'd rather the maintenance was done as soon as we can schedule it. We're inside the hurricane season, and we don't know what's coming up.
And the cables needed.
And we need these cables as well.
I thought the points...
We don't, as far as I know, have any licensed electrician on retained or anything. It's one thing to have the equipment. It's altogether something else in an emergency to have somebody that who's capable and qualified to hook it up.
Can Mr. Peeler help you with that, since he's in charge of maintenance and does a lot of work with electricians throughout the county?
Mr. Lilly might have something to contribute on about that budget.
I was just going to say, kind of in trying to go along with what your question was about, Commissioner, the maintenance that we need to do on these, we need to, they're diesel generators, and they need to have regular preventive maintenance done on them. And it's been a while. I think, how long's it been since the last time we had a, somebody check those? It's been about a year.
Yeah. We've run them before, but, you know.
Yeah. We want to preserve those assets, though, so.
At one time, didn't we have funds available for the generator maintenance?
On a as-need basis.
As a, as a need.
We need to set up a reg, that's what they're doing now, is setting up a regular maintenance schedule for them, so that we make sure that they're preserved.
But this past budget, we didn't have one?
No, just, just for spot, like, on a as-need basis.
Do we need to set up a budget amendment or a transfer or?
Oh, you said they had. Didn't you say y'all had that in the budget?
Well, this year, I don't know if this year.
If we were to try to get it now because of...
Is there money available in this year's budget?
We're probably going to have to do some, a budget amendment. The sheriff's office has had two large air conditioning units go out, and of course, that was totally unexpected.
Sure.
And so, you're looking at $25,000, $30,000 just for those two units.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. So, we're going to, Lieutenant Cook and I spoke yesterday, and we're going to go over their budgets and see if there's any, any money that we can move to help cover some of that cost. And then, then we'll be coming to the court with a budget amendment for the rest of it. And Commissioner Dobianski, he's been hit really hard this year on the repairs and maintenance at the LEC as well. And going to have to probably do a budget amendment for his account.
Since I haven't been servicing for a year, we really do need to.
I agree.
To have services.
Along with that, making sure that we have the cables, because it doesn't matter, it doesn't make any sense to have working generators, nothing to attach them to our system, and not even having to know how to get it done, so.
Well, I think it's in the best interest of the county to make sure that we have the assets available and running if needed in the event of an emergency. So I move that we approve an annual full-service maintenance agreement for the county's two portable emergency generators to be completed by Cummins Southern Plains, Houston.
Second.
Do we also need to approve the purchase of cables for that or without?
Not necessarily, because it's not including only this, that we just signed.
Before we go any further, Mr. Bolz, have you seen the agreement, or is it necessary for you to see the agreement?
I've seen the page that you have. I think that's the agreement.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have. Well, when you're left with, let's say, personal service or the service of one entity, and certainly if you have a recommendation, to some degree, you're in the dark. You're not a professional to know what things they're going to do to maintain it. So if this, if this entity has been, or we've been referred to this entity, I think in some regard, we're trusting that they're going to do the things that need be done. I'm not about to micromanage the sheriff's oversight of this.
No, I'm sure.
I assume that they're comfortable with it. Obviously, the terms are extremely limited. Signature below acknowledges and accepts the terms and conditions on the back. And the back says vibration testing and all other work will be performed on a time and material basis. Yeah, so you see what I see. It needs to be done, and we have some confidence in these folks. But the problem would be is if they do nothing, how do we file, how do we walk away from the agreement and not pay them or sue them for breach of contract if we didn't spell out all the things they were supposed to do? I don't know what all things they're supposed to do as part of maintenance. So, I mean, we're kind of in the darkness. I agree. With regard to your question, Commissioner, I would say, since we hear a budget amendment's coming, we ought to put the acquisition of the cables on that same budget, I would think, because it's not listed on this agenda.
And they're going to be kept with the individual units, the cables.
Sure.
I just, I just feel that we need a qualified person or an expert or a licensed electrician to make that determination on what would be, because these cables are not going to be cheap.
No.
And what would be the best cable, given all the unknown factors that we have, that would likely do a job under multiple situations in our field, which is length or also cable size and everything.
So the one generator is designed to provide power to the jail facility, the sheriff's office facility?
We have two. We have, we have a small one, we have the large 600 kilowatt backup as well. And they're covered by Cummins Southern Plains as far as their maintenance is concerned.
But the additional diesel generator, did that one come from the Expo Center?
Yeah, they...
Mr. Lilly, is that where?
These are two generators that were awarded with the Hurricane Act grant.
Right.
That Mr. Pinky worked on. Where the actual award recipients, where they go to, is unclear. We reached out to Amy Todd, who kind of helped administrate the grant.
Right.
And it's unknown. I think everybody has looked through the files in her office to try to figure out who actually is supposed to be in possession of these two generators. And it's unknown. So at some point, instead of just having them sit back in our yard and rotting, you know, we might as well upgrade them and use them for another county asset in the event of an emergency.
My memory has a tendency to tease me on what I remember, what I don't. But I was thinking way back when, there was a generator that was dedicated to the Expo Center because that would be a resource center or a big meeting area because of the size of the facility. But I, I don't really recall if that was the discussion.
It could be. And at this point, I would think these would be county assets. And I mean, I guess the court can make that decision if they want one of them to go there.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at, leading, if you don't need both of the large generators at the sheriff's office, and we were to dispatch one over to the Expo Center, when we see what type of hookups we need on the cables, the hookup at the Expo could be completely different than the hookup at the sheriff's office if there's a way to adapt both hookups to be the same. That way, they can use the same cables and not be an issue.
If you know you're going to dedicate that asset to the Expo Center, then it would be probably reasonable to take it down and have an electrician figure out the wiring for that generator and get whatever receptacle it needs to be at Expo Center and then have the cable hookup to it. And then, that's the case, and we'll deploy that there.
I guess my desire at the end of the day is both generators, both hookups are universal, whether they're at the sheriff's office or at the Expo Center. So if you ran a problem with one or the other, and I believe we moved it over here to the sheriff's office for security purposes.
Yeah, we just store them.
Right, I understand. But when we have to call them into action, one's going to go to the sheriff's office, the others will be dispatched where we...
No, we have our own two generators.
Okay.
Yeah, these are two separate. We have our own two generators that are in the office. So these would be deployed assets anywhere in a county that's going to need them.
All right.
Most instances, I say, especially, I know my reference, when we use generators out of the military, is, is you have one plugged in, and then in is open wire, basically, you have open connections. So you take them to areas, and an electrician just wired it directly instead of having a connector on that end.
Mr. Lilly?
Just to add a little bit to this, also the history of it, we, like Todd said, we tried our best to determine what we knew was purchased. These were purchased with right money, but we weren't clear as to what their intended purpose was. Commissioner Pinky, before she passed away, she did raise a concern about, I guess they were stored near the, over at the Navasota Center, and there was apparently an attempt, someone tried to steal one of them, and they didn't get far with it. So that's when the decision was made to relocate them here to the sheriff's office to protect the assets. But I do not remember her ever telling me at the time exactly what they were for. My thought was that they were intended for the two assisted living centers in Navasota, but they have in-place generators.
Right.
Maybe they didn't at the time. Maybe they didn't at the time, I don't know, but, but again, the decision was made, essentially we could not determine who these were, what agency these were intended for, the purpose, they were still county assets, we needed to protect them, so that's why we're here. And, you know, what, what you're, like, if they, one goes to the Expo Center, that'd be a great way to use it, you know, if their power goes out there, but the only thing I would advise is that we want to make sure it's protected, because again, there are people that will see them sitting there and likely try and take off with it, so they want to make sure it's secure, but the whole idea was to protect the assets.
Well, there's, there's still two filing cabinets full of information left by Commissioner Finkie in my office, and I'll certainly go through those and see if I can't locate some reference to.
Who would help to know what year?
Sometime after 2008, that's when the IT money came out.
She was pretty organized, so.
Yeah.
All right, on Agenda Item Number Nine, there's a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox, there's a second by Commissioner Walker, is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lieutenant. Agenda Item Number Ten, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Blake Baldabino, consider and take action on the revised resolution for Grant 3581701 Body-Worn Cameras.
Hey, sorry about being no kidding this morning, so I'm going to take this place.
All right.
This is a, something that's come before y'all a couple times, we've done a couple resolutions on this, we're just giving some wording corrected from the state for the resolution so the funds could be released. They made some changes, so we changed it into the resolution. This would be Resolution 3581701 that we had to submit to release the funds for the grant from the order to us purchasing scale.
And I thought, I saw the approval come through on that for the E grants.
Yes, yeah, we, we did see something yesterday, I think, or seven-four, but I know at one time, they recommended getting this redone again, so.
Agreed.
To be safe, sorry, I'd rather go ahead since it's already in, get this one approved just in case we need it.
Makes good sense. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the revised resolution for Grant 3581701 Body-Worn Cameras.
Second motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Ten by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Agenda Item Number Eleven, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. I know we had a little shower yesterday, but it was a little shower yesterday, since the signs are.
I'm not aware of any of our neighboring counties lifting their bans yet, so I have not had a chance to pull the parages yet, but I can ask Joan to, they're, they're meeting tonight, I can ask her to check with them, but that would be too late for you guys today.
Yeah.
My suggestion is that if it's for now, we keep it in place. The rain that did fall, most of it fell more on the south side of the county than the north side, in fact, we were out with FEMA on the north side yesterday and got a little bit, you know, enough to wet our wind chills, so, you know, the only other option would be to lift half of it, and again, that's been counterproductive in the past when the county has passed a half ban on one side of the county. So, just, my recommendation is that we keep it in place for now.
Okay.
I move that we take no action regarding the current burn, burn ban.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eleven by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor of no action?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, no action, burn ban stays in place. Number Twelve, County Attorney John C. Fouts, review and discuss the Emergency Management Services Agreement by and between Grimes County, Texas and St. Joseph's Regional Health Center. It is expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, Consultation with Attorney. So we're going to ask our guests in Commissioners Court, if you'll excuse ourselves, we will go in.
Really acting confident.
Yeah, why would they grab that?
You thought you got to go home.
I can, but that is not here.
We're going to reconvene to open court, it is ten thirty-four AM, and we have had consultation with our county attorney, and the decision has been made to take no action on Agenda Item Number Twelve at this time.
No decisions have already been made, but I'm hearing you make that decision now.
We're, we're making the decision that no action is to be taken on Agenda Item Number Twelve at this time.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I hadn't got there yet.
There's a motion by Commissioner Mallett, and a seconded by who? Commissioner Dobianski. To adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We have a.